Engineers and city staff.
I'll second.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Husnick and a second from Councilmember Beistrom. Any further discussion on this item? Just go to say, Mr. Lambert, thank you for continuing to work with us in the city and happy to see another, another successful project moving ahead.
Happy to be there. Thank you for your support.
And with that, Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Valento?
Aye.
And Mayor Bain?
Aye. Motion's approved. Good luck with your project.
Thank you very much.
And with that, we will move on to our next agenda item, which is Resolution 04122103, which is calling for a public hearing on the issuance of conduit revenue financing bonds and authorization of notice of a public hearing. This is in relation, relation to the North Lakes Academy project. And I believe either Sandy or Patrick is taking us through this. And there's Sandy.
Yeah. And basically, yeah. And basically, that's what this is. This is in regards to that conduit financing that we discussed at a workshop a few weeks ago with North Lakes Academy. And this is basically just a resolution that is required by state statute to, to start this process and to put this in a paper for a public notice for a public hearing for input.
Thank you, Sandy. Any questions for Sandy on this item? What, what is expected timing of that public hearing?
Um, I don't have the date. It was May.
It's May. I think it's May 10. I'm not sure, but I think that's the date.
Yeah, I think that's about right.
Yeah, I know. The conduit financing is a 30, not to exceed $33 million.
Thank you, Sandy. Any other questions? Otherwise, I'm happy to entertain a motion.
Mayor Bain, I make a motion to adopt Resolution 04122103, resolution calling for a public hearing on the issuance of conduit revenue refunding bonds and authorizing the publication of a notice of hearing.
And I'll second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Beistrom and a second from Councilmember Munson. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing done. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Valento?
Aye.
And Mayor Bain?
Aye. Motion approved. Just a quick administrative note before we move on to our next agenda item. It looks like we have a couple of attendees who I believe intended to be as part of open forum and missed that opportunity. However, I would like to, if council is willing, to amend our agenda at the end of our regular agenda to allow for a second open forum period. Pete, please keep me, keep me straight here on the process and procedure, but I believe the motion to do that would be at the end of our regular agenda to just make a motion to amend the agenda and add at that time. Is that correct?
That is correct, Your Honor, and you'll need a super majority.
Thank you so much. And super majority is four to one, is that correct? Perfect. And we'll, we'll do that at the end of our regular agenda. So Alex and Blake, hold tight. Got a couple more agenda items and then we'll get to you. Councilmember Husnick?
Yeah, Mara, I'd make a motion that we do have a open forum meeting after the regular agenda items, which would be after 7F. There's 7G then.
A motion. Yep. Perfect. A motion from Councilmember Husnick. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second from Councilmember Valento. And Karen, could we do a quick roll call vote on amending the agenda? And again, to be clear, that would be to add a second open forum after item 7F, right at the end of our regular agenda before we go into staff updates.
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Valento?
Aye.
And Mayor Bain?
Aye. Motion is approved. All right, we will continue on with our regularly planned agenda and move on to our next item, which is item 7D, which is the joint powers agreement with Washington County Sheriff's Office. And I believe Chief Peterson has this for us. Good evening, Chief.
Hi. Mayor and city council members, what I have for you is a joint powers agreement and a local agency security addendum between the Washington County Sheriff's Office and the City of Forest Lake. The joint powers agreement is in regards to our new records management system now called Central Square Software Systems that was implemented by the Washington County Sheriff's Office in May of 2018. The software program allows the City of Forest Lake to share law enforcement data with the Washington County Sheriff's Office and all other law enforcement agencies within Washington County that utilize the system. The joint powers agreement states that all agencies utilizing the system will comply with the Washington County technology and security standards due to users connecting into the Washington County network to access applications. These standards are outlined in the attached document titled Washington County Information Security Policy Local Agency Security Addendum. This refers to Washington County Policy 3006 Information Security Policy. The intent of the security addendum is to ensure that the Forest Lake Police Department maintains a security program consistent with federal and state laws, regulations and standards. I have reviewed Washington County security policy and compared it with our own policies that are in place involving public data and security, and they're all consistent with each other. We also acknowledge that our department's personnel will have to follow Washington County security policy along with our own, our own policies. Our city attorneys Pete and Amanda have reviewed, reviewed both the joint powers agreement and the addendum between the Washington County Sheriff's Office and the City of Forest Lake and have no problems on how they are written or their content. And staff recommendation is for the city council to approve the attached joint powers agreement and local agency security addendum. And if you have any questions in regards to these two documents, I am here to answer them for you.
Thank you, Chief. Council, what questions might you have, Chief, or are there any questions of Chief this evening?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the joint powers agreement and local agency security addendum as presented.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And motion from Councilmember Munson, second from Councilmember Valento. And any further questions or discussion on this item? Hearing done. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrom?
Aye. Was that Beistrom?
Councilmember Munson?
Okay.
Beistrom.
Okay.
Councilmember, Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Valento?
Aye.
And Mayor Bain?
Aye. Motion's approved. Our next item this evening is item 7E, the Scandia Properties Castlewood Agreement. And Patrick, you're walking us through this.
Yes, I am. At long last, after a lot of back and forth, we have an agreement between Scandia Properties, which owns the parking lot and restaurant building next to the Castlewood Golf Course for an agreement that establishes the terms of our relationship that have never really been put down in writing or understood very well in the past. So what this is, an annual agreement that will automatically renew year after year, as long as both parties want that to continue. Part of the interesting part is that through the research and our back and forth, we found that the city is the owner of the building itself. And with this is now, instead of a lease for the building, this is a ground lease for where the building is located. So this then puts the city in control of maintenance and whatever else that little small building needs. The highlights of the terms are rent, annual rent of $3,300. A parking lot contribution for $2,600 annually. The city also agreed to that if major capital improvements were made, that it would share 33% of the capital improvement, as long as the capital improvement was identified to the city August 1st before the, the year before the improvement needs to be made, so we can figure out a budget for that. And again, it's like an auto renew that either party can terminate 90 days before the date of expiration. I think it's a good agreement. It finally spells out what's in charge and who's in charge of the property, the golf course, the use of the parking lot and so forth. So I recommend the council approve this agreement.
Thank you, Patrick. Council, any questions for Patrick this evening on this agreement? I just had a quick note of clarification, just to make sure I understand. So this has turned into a ground, a land lease agreement because we own the building. Essentially, we own the building because we built the building. Is that, is that a correct understanding?
One, the township, and we have records of building permits and, and all associated back agreements that the city owns that building itself. And it really is leasing the land that the building was placed upon. So we, why we needed, why we did that is to make sure who was responsible for the maintenance of the building, if it needed improvement of the building, if it needed. And so I think it really clears up who's in charge of what and how, who maintains what. And I think it improves our relationship because both parties now know where we each stand and what we have to do.
Correct. And we have had a parking easement, but this is the first time we've actually had an agreement between both for the parking lot that is more formal as well as for this building. Is that correct?
This is the first time we've had any type of written agreement, period. We've never had an agreement for rent or use of the building, use of the land, use of the parking lot. All we've had is a unofficial agreement that had certain terms, who knows what they were depending on what year it was. But yeah, we did have a parking lot easement that we still have and is still in place or remain in place. We, this, this contract does not change that. So yes, this is the first time we've ever had an agreement on any of this.
I'm happy to support this this evening and think, would like to thank Mr. Stevens for his work and partnership in getting us to this point. And, you know, certainly Castlewood's an important amenity, but that amenity needs a building and needs parking. And so to more formalize that agreement and to provide clarity long term, it's nice to see that in black and white now and hopefully is the kind of the basis for long-term relationships. So happy to support this this evening and appreciate Mr. Stevens' partnership in getting here. Any other questions or comments at this point?
I, I agree. I'm, I'm glad that we're here. Finally, I know that we had some missteps along the way. And I know that they, you know, have kind of impacted that relationship a bit. So now that we are, are working to kind of align from the business side, you know, more standardized contractual agreements, depending upon who the organization is, the, the senior center, Castlewood, that we can continue to, to work on and, and build that relationship. I think we have an opportunity for that relationship to be mutually beneficial. And that's certainly the outcome that I would like to see in the long term.
Councilmember Husnick?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, you know, I just want to make sure that my understanding of this whole thing is that I'm really glad that it's in black and white. You know, it's written down. There's no question about who said what and that kind of thing. And when it's signed and sealed, it's a done deal. So I, based on that, I'd make a motion that we approve this agreement.
I'll second that.
There's a motion from Councilmember Husnick and a second from Councilmember Munson. Any further discussion this evening? Hearing done. Karen, could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Valento?
Aye.
And Mayor Bain?
Aye. Motion's approved. Our next item this evening is item 7F, which are the ACE hardware invoices.
Mayor Bain, I'll make a motion to approve the ACE hardware invoices and the amount of $54.81.
And I'll second.
There's a motion from Councilmember Beistrom and a second from Councilmember Munson. And could we have a roll call, please? And Karen, you're on mute.
Councilmember Husnick?
Abstain.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Beistrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Valento?
Aye.
Mayor Bain?
Motion approved. That ends our regular agenda item, this, items this evening. And as planned, we will move into our second open forum. Just quick comments about open forum before we get started. Open forum is any interested party's opportunity to speak to council on any topic of their choosing. Please understand that council generally does not give feedback during open forum. Generally, we instruct staff to provide feedback back, but are happy to welcome Mr. Roberts and Mr. Bulmer to the floor tonight. And if the floor is yours, whenever you're ready.
I guess I'll go first. Thank you, everyone, for opening this up again. I just want to thank everyone for the change in the policy for the pavement policy for Fifth Avenue. It'll be great to see that change and the safety. Also, with that change, we've been talking with the city on adding the drive-through to our building as well for Big Apple. So I'm open to having some discussions with anyone that has, has some concerns or just want to know a little bit more about it. So thanks again for your time.
Thank you. And Mr. Roberts?
Thank, thank you for allowing me to more time. We both were logged on, but we just couldn't get in for whatever reason. So I own the property at 508 Lake Street South. Alex is a tenant of ours that runs Big Apple Bagel. I would like to thank the city for the policy change as well. This has been a long road and appreciate the leadership of the city administrator, the mayor, and Ryan Goodman, Bolton and Mink for helping this finally come to fruition. So wanted to speak before to thank you and realizing that was part of the consent agenda. But we, we do want to, and we will, and we've already had conversations with Donovan and Ryan about coming forward with a planned drive-through as part of this project. There will be, we understand a variance that we'll have to obtain to, to have that happen. And so we are going to, you know, proceed with that with the planning commission. And also would welcome any conversations or, or any thoughts on how we could achieve that. I think we have a fairly good plan going forward that addresses some of the issues of queuing and stacking. That is a much better scenario than a lot of current drive-throughs in the city. And so I, you know, I know it's, we have to go to the planning commission first and hopefully that will get approved. But you know, any feedback with the council or, or thoughts would be appreciated and welcomed and we'll probably be reaching out in the, in the future. So thanks again for approving this, again, the policy and the road. It's been, you know, 30, 40 years in the works and it will clean up the area significantly, add better traffic control and safety for the whole area. So thanks again.
Thank you for being here. We look forward to watching the project as it goes through planning commission. And we always appreciate you, your offer for a conversation. So thanks again. Were there any other, any other submissions for open forum this evening? And we, since we opened it up again. All right, not seeing any, we will close open forum and we will move on to staff updates. Patrick, let's start with you and then I believe if we've got, yes, we'll go to Patrick first and then Dan.
Yeah, I only have one quick item. As we've fallen a little bit behind on the senior center, senior center opening a little bit of our public information. Jackie has been out sick and actually been hospitalized for the last few days. So once she's back, we will try to recover. So just to let you know, we're working on that. And the senior center is just, the planning is just falling a little behind. So we'll catch up when we get back and get back to all that.
Understood. And thank you for the update. Any questions for Patrick this evening? All right, we will go on to Dan and then Chief Peterson.
I have one quick update this evening regarding the testing of the council chambers that we did last week to see if the blended meetings would work. Report that the test failed. We weren't able to get the blended meetings to work. It was operator error on my part, though. I forgot that when they hooked the system up, they gave me a USB plug to plug into the computer. I didn't realize that until after we trusted everything. So I got a one-on-one session with tyranny and we got it all resolved and we're going to retest again next week. So hopefully the next council meeting, I'm, I'll be able to report that everything went well, but the last test did not go good. But that was due to operator error. So we'll get that tested next week. And I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Any questions for Dan this evening? All right, Chief Peterson and we'll do Chief Newman after Chief Peterson.
Mayor and city council members, I don't have any specific updates for you tonight, but if you have questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Any questions for Chief Peterson this evening? All right, Chief Newman. And after Chief Newman, we will go to Donovan.
Mayor, members of the council, I have one update for you tonight. Our application period ended on April 1st for the position of paid-on-call firefighter. We had 13 applications. This Saturday, we will be doing our physical agility test here at the station. And then the following Saturday, we will be doing interviews. So hopefully we'll be able to hire some firefighters and the start date will be 7/1.
And Chief, how many, how many firefighters would you like to hire?
We can hire up to five.
And a typical, how many applicants do you typically have at this point in the process? I think you were maybe running a little lean. Is that still where it's coming in?
Usually 30 to 35. So this is a lot lower. We're uncertain if maybe this is COVID-related. We've been pretty consistently over 30 applications every time we've done a hiring process, except for this one.
Right. Okay. Will you do another? I suppose it depends on outcome. I'll, I'll hold my question till later.
Okay.
Any questions for Chief Newman this evening? All right, we will go to Donovan and then we will go to Pete and Amanda after Donovan.
Mayor, members of council, I don't have much to update you on, except that it is considerably warmer and sunnier in Arizona and California this time of the year. Happy to take any questions from you.
Any questions for Donovan this evening? Donovan, I suggest, I take it you are not in the state of Minnesota?
I was not. No, we did, I did college trips. I have a good excuse, but it seems like it takes a lot of time to, you know, have a senior visit colleges in warm climates.
Amen, it does. Councilmember Munson and I are living that exact experience at this moment. So enjoy your trip. Thank you for being here. Any question, other questions for Donovan? All right, Pete and Amanda next, and then let's go to Ryan after Pete and Amanda.
Your Honor, members of council, I don't have any update for you, other than to report that I am currently in Arizona with my aging parents. And at dinner, my 90-year-old father specifically asked me to say hi to the mayor for him.
Tell your, tell your father the mayor and council say hello. Lovely. Is anybody in the state of Minnesota? We're all taking advantage of these Zoom meetings. Yeah, yeah, we're here, right? All right. And we, Ryan, looks like Ryan's in Minnesota.
Yeah, I am in Minnesota. Just a couple of things of notes, since it was on the consent agenda, both your street projects tonight, the bids were significantly lower than our estimates. Thus, that allows to come back for future council meeting for a change order to add to those projects and stay within the planned budgets. Both Scandia and Forest Lake just crushed it this year. And what I've found out, talking to the contractor, that actually won both of them, but all the low bids are coming out of commercial asphalt in Scandia, that a larger company, bigger than Tiller, bought Tiller out and Tiller owns commercial asphalt and burnt sand and gravel. So I think they're coming in, bought the market this year. So we'll take, we'll take advantage of that when we can because it was stuff that we haven't seen pricing in a long time for. So that's really good and good news. It allows us to get to some of the stuff that Public Works would have had to majorly deal with this that blew up over the winter. So we can deal with it now, part of the street project. We did submit grant application to the Met Council INI. So that's in the waiting period now. We obviously showed a lot of needs and have three separate projects lined up for that, which would be the sewer lining project that we authorized. The lift station one that we already got some money, you know, from legislation. And then if we break out a portion of the street project that needs significant amount of sewer work, we submitted that as well. So there's a lot of needs there. And at a minimum, if the grant obviously moves forward, which it should, we would get $50,000 just because we already hit the minimum threshold. So now the rest of the pool, the money goes into the big pot and we wait till everybody submits to see what it is. But it's big. So, but hopefully a lot of cities then submit. There were some hiccups during this release of the application, so maybe that, that's in our favor too. So other than that, final plans and specs are close on Forest Hills Farms 2. I know they changed the development name officially. I don't know what it is offhand. But that would potentially bring 35 lots of construction into the 2021 construction season this year, which is a nice little different market than we have over in the headwaters area too, especially with the, the size of the land and stuff like that, and the nature of the area. So a lot of other things going on, obviously with the county and MinnDOTs and just a lot of stuff in the queue. I know earlier in the EDA, there were people asking about, you know, stuff that Donovan and I are always working on. It's a lot, but a lot of those potential investors want to remain, you know, anonymous at this time because they're trying to make deals or make things work financially and/or competition level that, you know, by brought forward that they don't want stuff publicly released until they submit their real application. So that's why it's hard to talk about a lot of the positive things that are going on. But if we start doing that, then we would lose those developers instantly. So with that, I'll just sum it up with any questions you guys might have.
Thank you, Ryan. And great feedback on the, you know, the question around, you know, perspective development and what's in pipeline. Yeah, there's, I appreciate the interest, but also appreciate the sensitivity and that there is a legal process on when that information becomes public. So, um, other questions for Ryan this evening? All right, let's go to Sandy and then Karen after Sandy.
I don't have anything specific tonight, but unless somebody has any questions for me, I can answer.
Anything for Sandy this evening? All right, Karen, anything for council tonight?
Just a couple of things. Thank you, Mayor. I had hoped to be able to direct all of you to our city website for some Republic Services information. When Bev came to the workshop, she gave a presentation. And then if you recall, after that, I had sent out an email to all the council members with more detailed information about where Republic was than where they are now, after they have been around for a year and a half with us. And so it was really good information. It was positive. I think the overall message was basically that Forest Lake is doing really good at recycling. We're getting better and better, even since Republic has started. So the numbers are good. And I wanted to have the website reflect that information. Because Jackie's sick, coming, as soon as that information's up, I will let you know, but you can look for that soon. And then the other thing I wanted to draw your attention to was the emergency services applications for outdoor food and liquor that we had last year. So we're doing the same thing again because restaurants are not at full capacity. We are still allowing them to turn in that application to have outdoor service, expand their patios if they need to do that. And so far, I have four applications that came in. So I think last week or week before I sent those out, I have four applications that came in and have been approved already. So they're all ready to go. They've been notified. And I think I have two right now that are under review. So another positive thing is for those businesses to be able to expand those patios again this year. Also, I should say, if anybody wants to do that or looking to do that, they can contact me. I can get them an application or they can go to our city website. They are located on the website as well.
Perfect.
That's all I had.
Thank you, Karen. Any questions for Karen this evening? All right, hearing done. I think I picked up all staff. I don't think I missed anybody. We will move on to council updates and we will start with Councilmember Husnick and then go to Councilmember Beistrom.
Thank you, Mara. I attended the EDA meeting prior to our council meeting tonight. And I know you'll expand on it, but the one thing that I really appreciate was the fact that we might be able to... Did I lose it?
You're there.
Am I there now or no?
You're there.
Okay. Was the fact that we'd probably be getting rid of the old... Okay. Was the fact that we'd probably be getting rid of the old, the old theater building. So that was, that, that was a positive thing on my end of it. So tomorrow I'll let you expand on the rest of it that we.
For sure. Thank you, Councilmember Husnick, Councilmember Bystrom, and then Councilmember Munson. And Kathy, you're on mute.
Yep, I am. Not much. I just wanted to acknowledge quite a bit of citizen communication over the last few weeks. And then just to mention that we have a Parks, Trails and Lakes Commission workshop tomorrow night where we will be discussing the facility use agreement with FLA. I know even since Jamie sent out the, the agreement last week, there have been a few, there's been communication with FLA and a few modifications. So looking forward to seeing what that looks like and, and hopefully we can truly wrap that up here soon and get the sports season underway. They'll also be discussing arts in the park. No decision has been made formally about that. As you all know, we're still under emergency executive order. There are still capacity restrictions and guidelines about food service. And so it's kind of complicated, but hopefully we'll be able to pull something together that will align with some guidelines and, and get the community back together safely. That's all I have.
Perfect. Thank you. Councilmember Valento?
Thank you. So I, I attended the watershed district meeting and they approved the Forest Hills Farm permit. And they also approved a resolution for the Lower St. Croix One Watershed One Plan. And I know that the one plan is still relatively new. And I know that the, me being newer to the watershed district, I've come across that the watershed district has some issues with it. So it'll be interesting to see if they work that out and how that comes about in the future.
Excellent. Thank you. A couple of quick updates for me, couple of things of council to have on radar for a couple of meetings coming up. EDA meeting met tonight and some of you will recall that the EDA had previously received a grant from the Hallberg Family Foundation for some public art. And that, that those funds were accepted by the ED and the EDA has been holding that until that project could come into fruition. That project, it has now come into fruition and the proposal is, you can see the, the description of the planned project on the EDA website. And I mentioned it to you because it's coming to you for location approval in two weeks. The planned location is the roundabout near the, near the park, not the Broadway and Lake Roundabout, but the roundabout, roundabout to the east, right next to the park where the Christmas tree is. The thought is that it is a seasonal up in the spring, down late fall. Art piece that is about nine feet tall, five feet wide. And there is a picture and description. Because it's going in our public roundabout, we wanted council approval on that. And so that's coming to you in a couple of weeks. Downtown Beautification Group has been involved in the project. They were there at the EDA tonight and appreciate all of their work in having this project move ahead and also Dan's work in kind of shepherding it along. So be looking for that. And then also at the next downtown committee working session, which is in two weeks, we are going to be doing a preliminary kickoff with the downtown planning group, that HKGI, which was just hired at a recent meeting. And we are going to do a walkabout downtown. And so I'd like to invite council to join us for that. We noticed all of our meetings, I was having a, a potential quorum of council. And so just a quick note to staff to make sure that we noticed that, but would like to welcome you all to join for that. We will time it so that we have enough time to speed off to our respective residences at a safe rate of speed to get back before council meeting. But if you wanted to join us for that downtown roundabout, an opportunity to both meet the planning group and just to kind of kick off that process. So that'll be in two weeks and look for more details on the EDA agenda. That's all I have this evening. And Councilmember Bystrom?
Mayor Bain, there seems to be a little bit of confusion about that art project out in the community about, you know, how it's being funded. I, I'm just want to add that to the list of, you know, list for poor Jackie, the list of communication items. You know, maybe something out on social media. I don't know. Again, some, some concerns and questions and confusion around how that's being funded. So if we could clarify that, I think that would be helpful.
Understood. And, and point, and we, something we should be repeating every time we talk about this project, that it is being paid for in whole by a grant from the Hallberg Family Foundation. Of course, there's a little bit of staff time in coordinating the maintenance of this project, but it is, it is not being, you know, subsidized by tax dollars. And then the other point of confusion was around the location. I think there was some thought, but it was that central roundabout at Lake and Broadway. And that is not the case. It is the much smaller, less used roundabout to the east, closer to the park and location. So good points and yes, something that we need to continue to reinforce. Certainly, we have lots of infrastructure need within the community, but it is nice to have some gifts to be able to do some, you know, some nice add-ons as well. And so I appreciate the, the work that the group has done and then also the donation to make this happen. But yeah, good point on continued communication on how it, how it's come, come about. All right. That being the end of our planned agenda, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
We're moved.
Councilmember Husnick, and is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. And Karen, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Husnick?
Aye.
Councilmember Munson?
Aye.
Councilmember Bystrom?
Aye.
Councilmember Valento?
Aye.
And Mayor Bain?
Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody. Have a great evening and a good rest of your week.